Good evening and welcome to the Wednesday, February 22 Town Board Work Session. I will call the meeting to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Rob.
Here.
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 Thank you. Board, you have the approval of minutes of February 8 before you. Is there any additions, deletions, corrections?
So moved.
So moved, moved in.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you. Monthly reports are out and are coming back to the supervisor's office. I appreciate you. Thank you to all the staff that's done that already, and those that haven't, I'm sure will see them. First order of business tonight is we have some guests here with some reports. I will turn this over first to Mr. Tate. We're going to have the MRB group on a DPW discussion. If you would like to join us at the table, thank you. Mr. Tate, please take it away.
Thank you. With me, I do have Maggie Narian and Dave Doyle, both with MRB. A little history kind of on, you know, we're going to be talking about our DPW facility to kind of backtrack a little bit just for the boards, you know, I guess, information. The Town Board originally hired MRB to start looking at a feasibility study for our DPW facility back into in early, actually, January of 2017. That was primarily kind of started the fact that our building was originally built in 1957. It has had a number of additions added to it over the years. However, it's, you know, currently, the actual size of the building is approximately 28,000 square feet. And while the town has grown over the years, really, our building has not kept up. You know, vehicles and trucks are bigger than they ever were. You know, we have more than we have in the past. The town is continuing to grow, yet we're out of room already. We've got vehicles parked outside and really not the most efficient or safest working conditions in the building, and certainly want to make sure that we can improve, but also continue to be able to provide the same services that we are to residents right now. So with that, the first slide that Mark's got pulled up is our existing site layout. So this is our site at 1607 Jackson Road. As you can see towards the bottom of the screen, kind of the L-shaped building is our existing highway and parks DPW garage. A little bit further to the north, in 2007, 2008-ish, the, there was a new building constructed on there for the sewer operations center that houses our sewer department as well as our facilities department. Really, it's the building to the south that's the original 1957 building plus the additions that that's, you know, out of date at this point. There are some outbuildings between our salt barn, our kind of sand, sand-salt mixed barn, and then a cold storage pole barn for some of our equipment that are also located further to the north on the site.
Okay.
So the next slide that you look at, over the years as we've worked with MRB to determine what exactly could be done with our site, you know, we have looked at the idea of potentially moving to another site. We've looked at a few different options. However, from kind of a practicality standpoint, with our site being kind of centralized, the very middle of town, you know, it is convenient. Our neighbors, while they may not always like the noise of our trucks leaving early in the morning or late at night, you know, they are used to it. And given some of the other infrastructure that we have, you know, we wanted to try to remain on the existing site as much as practical. With that, we do have constraints with the size of our site. You know, it isn't, it isn't just a giant open field, so there would be kind of a phasing that would need to be done to be able to incorporate that. You know, we'd certainly, given that the build timeframe, you know, to do a building this size would be approximately two years. We would need to be able to continue to operate out of a building to be able to make vehicle repairs, especially come winter time. You know, it's not enjoyable for anyone to be laying on their back out in the slush in the snow like it is today, trying to fix a truck to be able to get it back out and continue plowing the roads. So the thought was to be able to take down the outbuildings, the salt barn, the pole barn, the sand barn, build the new building in their place, and then take down our existing building and rebuild those outbuildings and essentially flip-flop our site. As you look at it, in the, where it says highway garage, there are two lines kind of to the far left of the building. The line that's kind of in the center that Mark's highlighting with the mouse, that is where the kind of a theoretical building footprint, if we were to do just a minimal 22-bay building, that would house purely just the trucks that we have today with no room for growth or future expansion. What we're looking, you know, not wanting to be short-sighted, is to actually do a 26-bay truck building, which would give us, you know, the ability, as the town continues to grow, to have that, that room for, you know, more trucks as we add more plow routes, as we add more equipment, to be able to fit in the building and not need to do an addition onto a brand-new building in a year or two.
Mm-hmm.
With that, the next slide kind of shows what that actual building floor plan, you know, would look like with the 26 bays. You know, this is kind of a rough, you know, overview of the entire building. It would be a common drive-through, you know, one way in, one way out, minimizing the number of doors. It'd be more energy-efficient, especially when our trucks are going out to plow. Right now, we open up every door on every side of the building, all of the heat escapes, and then we're trying to reheat, reheat the building as-is. This would certainly help our utility bills and make the building itself a lot more efficient and safer. The next slide is kind of just a zoomed-in portion showing the, more of the office space as well as the kind of mechanic shop portion of the building. With that, not only did we want to incorporate into the building the possibility for future growth as far as, you know, vehicles and equipment, but also as far as our own staff. So we did incorporate. Currently, we have, you know, a single locker room with not even enough lockers for the employees that we have, and we wanted to make sure that we've got, you know, enough for what we have, plus some, but also to incorporate, you know, a women's locker room versus a men's locker room to actually separate that. You know, same thing with the, the actual break room itself. You know, wanted to make sure that we've got enough for the number of staff that we currently have, you know, plus what we believe that we may need to add over the next few years.
Mr. Tate, if I can just interrupt with a couple of questions.
Sure.
For the building floor plan, sorry to make you go back. How many vehicles in our existing fleet roughly?
So as far as plow trucks, we have 22. We have 18 root trucks and four spares.
And I know that the board had authorized the purchase of additional vehicles for fiscal year 2023 and 2024. Looking ahead with the building plan in mind for 2024, 2025, how many vehicles do you anticipate in the full fleet?
So the vehicles that we've planned and budgeted for, those are to replace existing vehicles.
Okay.
So those aren't necessarily new or additional, I guess.
Okay, so the, the number is going to be more or less the same?
Correct.
So you've at least said that you, to accommodate for future growth.
Yep.
So what's the buffer that we're looking at for potential additional vehicles in the fleet?
So because we currently have 22 vehicles plus some equipment, we'd want to be able to bring that in. You know, some of that would, would take some of those kind of spare, those four spare bays, the difference being from 22 to 26, we could move some equipment into the building. But just looking at the town overall and the amount of development east of 250.
Okay.
And the, the potential for that over the next, you know, 20, 30, 40, 50 years, we want to be able to account for knowing that at some point, we will, you know, while we've, while we're currently at an 18 plow truck, at some point, we're going to go to a 19. We'll probably end up going to a 20, and we'll want to have, make sure that we've got room in the building for those trucks, but also to have an ample amount of spares.
Okay, so in this floor plan as proposed, I see 26 parked vehicles, potentially four in the maintenance garage. Are we anticipating for enough growth?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. And then to the office floor plan with the lockers, how many individual lockers does this floor plan have?
So there's 63 in the men's room, five in the women's room, and as far as actual chairs that are at tables within the break room, we're at 72.
Okay, and how many currently with DPW?
Currently, we have 55.
Great, thank, where do, since you said there aren't sufficient locker rooms, lockers for staff currently, where do they keep their belongings and personal effects?
Some of them keep it in their own vehicles. Some of them carry their stuff with them. Some of them have kind of find a spot to throw their stuff on a bench out in the garage.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
Now, the next slide, it is kind of just a short, you know, sample of the, the actual seven or eight-page programming packet that MRB uses and has used, not only with our building, but as well as some of the other projects that they'll be talking about shortly, to help determine how much room is actually needed in any of these given spaces. So it's not us saying we want a building next to a square feet. What can we put into that? It's what do we actually need for each individual space, and then how does that actually add together to come up to the total sum? So again, these are just two of the seven pages just to show that it wasn't, it wasn't just a pie in the sky, but there was actually some thought as to how exactly the building would be oriented, how, what, what space was needed for our current, you know, our, our current day-to-day routine. The next slide does have some cost estimates. Now, keep in mind, these estimates were put together in April of 2022. As I'm sure you're all aware, numbers have changed. They have increased. Unfortunately, nothing has gone down significantly since then. Knowing that this project, and while it even indicates that the estimated construction timeline is approximately a year and a half at this point because of material shortages and delays, you know, what I've heard from, from MRB and even some surrounding towns that are looking at similar projects is that this project, while, you know, in the past may have taken a year and a half, is probably looking at closer to a two-year-plus build timeframe, which is only going to increase the overall cost. We did look at, as you see kind of on the left side, there is, you know, if we were to do just the bare minimum 22-truck-bay building for what we currently have versus the 26, the difference between them fairly minimal. About a million and a half to go to, to be able to accommodate and guarantee that you're going to have that room for growth. On the right side of the page, there is a, a phase construction estimate. That was a request of the Town Board at the time to look at the possibility, if you were to build the building in smaller kind of pieces and chunks and phases, to try to do it, you know, six to $7 million at a time. To be able to do that, you'd be essentially go from one phase right into the next at the very quickest, and ultimately, it actually ended up adding roughly $3 million to the overall cost and taking quite a bit longer. You know, no matter what, doing a building of this size with our site, it's going to have some impact to just the services that we can provide. Certainly minimizing that and minimizing the impact that it has on the residents and the services we can provide, I think is certainly important. So with that, the, the 26-bay building that we prefer to do and that we think is the, the best option, while the estimate that was prepared in April of 2022 does come in just shy of 22 million, if, if the board, and not that I'm looking for, you know, a yes vote tonight.
Right.
But if the board were in favor realistically, and I'll let MRB speak about it a little bit, ideally, we'd be able to break ground and start construction in spring of 2024. And based on kind of the estimate from 2022 versus what we, where we think numbers currently are and where they even would be at that point, we think that, that 22 million has even grown or will grow to approximately 25 million. The last two slides are a rendering of what the building kind of could and would look like. Again, it's not to say that it's finalized or exact, but that, you know, in keeping with what the other buildings that we have on our site, to try to make it somewhat of a campus feel, to, to make everything, you know, tied together, certainly want to have as much consistency as possible, as well as make, make the building, you know, visually appealing, you know, trying to go for the same thing. So this is one, if you're standing kind of in the, the main drive aisle, looking back toward the yard, what the, that front corner that's closest in the picture would be, you know, mostly the office space with the garage kind of further back. Mark, if you can flip to the next. And then this, this picture, again, what we'd be looking to kind of replace and, and actually build the outbuildings where our current facility is, just to be able to show kind of a size comparison from what the new building would be, where it would sit, excuse me, compared to our other existing buildings on the, the same site.
Okay.
With that, I'd like to turn it over to MRB, let them just explain a little bit about what they've done with some of the other municipalities in the area, what projects they've completed, what projects they've got ongoing, and any other details that they feel relevant.
Great, thank you. You're welcome.
Yeah, well, thank you for giving us the opportunity to, to be here tonight. I'll just make some brief remarks. Eric did a great job of, of kind of giving you a picture of where we are and then where we started and how we got there. We've done a lot of these projects over the last 10 years or so. We learn something every time we do one. Maggie has been involved in basically all of those projects and is currently the lead for our Clarence project, which is under construction now, and for the Webster project that we're designing right now and plan to bid in, in the June timeframe. So I'm certain that, that she can answer your questions about, about the details and the experience we've had in the other, in the other facilities that we've done and some of the challenges that we faced with this one. So with that, we will certainly try to answer your questions to the best of our ability. And I don't know, Maggie, if you want to make some remarks about some of the details of some of the facilities we've done, particularly maybe Webster and Clarence, which are the most recent ones.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
As Dave said, we've done a lot of highway garages. In fact, our architectural team, one of the main components that we focus on is highway garages. So we know highway garages. I'd say in the past six, eight years, we've probably done 10. Some of you may have visited some. We've done Canandaigua, Farmington, Cicero. We have Clarence under construction, South Bristol, Nunde. I know that Eric has been on a tour of a few of them. Cicero, which is just outside of Syracuse, is actually a great one to talk about because Cicero is almost the archetype for the building that you see here. And if you look at them aesthetically, they look very similar. Their layout is very similar. Certainly, the construction type is very similar. So it was a great archetype for us to have Eric visit and then for us to walk through and start our programming efforts. So Eric touched on the programming documents that you saw on the screen there. It's a document, it's a working, living document that we put together over the course. I mean, I think we worked on that for two years we were editing it.
Yes.
And it's really the most important pivotal point that we can start from because it's talking to the end user and all of the different teams that you have in the building to figure out, what do you really need? What do you want? What do you need? And then how can we organize that in some easy-to-understand way and then narrow it down? So you're going to start here with a bigger building, and we're going to really try and fine-tune it because we don't want to design the Taj Mahal. We want to design something that's cost-efficient, that sits on the site, which as we can see, it's a tight site. There's a lot there. So we have to be very efficient in where we put things, how we lay things out, how the site circulation moves, how the circulation moves in the building. So in some of the other garages that we've done, Eric was able to visit, we really got a feel for what works and what doesn't work. And so I think in talking with his team, we have a plan that makes a lot of sense, and it's very cost-effective, both in how we've laid it out and the materials that we're using. And I think we can't highlight that enough, that we've done so many of these that we've really been able to fine-tune the best materials that we can use, the best bang for your buck. So yes, it's an expensive building, and because of what materials are doing right now, they're getting more expensive. We touched on that. We have seen material costs come down slightly since quarter two, quarter three of last year, especially lumber. We're not designing a building made of lumber. You're designing a steel and a CMU building. Steel's going up. In fact, we know just last month, we heard two weeks ago that steel went up another 9%. So the building that you see here, even though it's an expensive building and steel, it's the most appropriate building material that we can use for a building of this magnitude. It gives us a great big clear span, and it allows us to park the trucks in there with no columns, no other obstructions. So it's a very efficiently designed building. It's also a very energy-compliant building. It's ADA compliant. It can fit the whole staff. Trucks can be parked safely in a way where they can maneuver around the building in a safe way. And then, as we've talked about, there's growth. There's not so much growth that we're over-designing, but we're thinking very clearly about what do we need one year from now? What do we need seven years from now? And let's be cognizant that we're not putting too much into this building.
All right, yeah.
Is there anything else you'd like me to touch on?
And I apologize, I, thinking back, should have mentioned it before. Our current building does not have a fire suppression or sprinkler system. That's certainly one thing that we'd want to include with this building. You know, as some of you may realize or know, a few years ago, Ronda Quay had a fire at their, their highway garage. It necessitated them needing to build a brand-new building. Fortunately, we, we have not had to go through that. However, a number of years ago, we also had a Christmas Eve fire and caused a significant amount of damage to the building. We have been able to make repairs and were able to salvage the building. However, I'd hate for that to happen again.
But that's in, that's in this projected estimate?
That's, that's included in the cost, yep.
As well, okay, thank you. Board, questions?
So I'm looking at the facility program, and I see with some special requirements, it looks like there are deliverables that are potentially in flux. I'm looking at the clerk office space. It looks like it's undetermined about mailboxes, potential radiant floor in some of the bays and heated garage space for some of the vehicles.
Oh, I see.
Are all of these now tied up so that the estimates are what they are?
Yes.
Yeah, the final version of this document was actually July of that year. So I think this was just a clip that he put in there to show the process.
Yeah, I just took a screenshot of what I was able to quickly find, but certainly not the, the newest.
I don't know how the rest of the board feels about it, but I know we've had conversation trying to think ahead about our perks and recreation design and going towards the way of more sustainability. And I know that we recently discussed the pledge that we're going to take as a clean, smart community. I don't, I'm talking out of school here, but I don't see those kind of considerations in this design plan. For example, I don't see solar incorporated at all. I, I haven't heard anything about, you know, I hear the design of materials and that these are very energy-efficient, ADA compliant, but, you know, quite frankly, you're not going to have civilians strolling onto this facility, right? They're going to be very restricted in terms of use. So I'm looking to hear more about what design elements you have that kind of support the town's overall thinking in trying to be more environmental and sustainable.
And certainly, the question you raise is something that we hear time and time again. Can we incorporate wind turbines, solar panels, geothermal? And studies have shown time and time again that in our area, those specific strategies don't bring about a return of investment that makes sense for a building of this magnitude. It's too big of a building. So we're not seeing the payback that might make sense for something like this. And ultimately, it may end up costing a more expensive building. So what we look to be more energy-efficient green is we use green materials. We use insulated metal panels, which make up the walls and the roofs. We use LED. We use green interior finishes. So we're not looking at green strategies, what you might hear in the news, wind turbines of that nature, but we look for whatever material use, mechanical and electrical components that we can look at to be the most energy-efficient to meet the energy code at this point.
Okay.
And I can add that while, while you can't see it in this particular image or picture, we do have a rain garden that was built, essentially half-built out when the sewer building was actually constructed with the idea that it could be doubled to accommodate another building on the site. So that is something that would be incorporated as part of this to improve the, the stormwater management. Certainly something we need to, to take into account, and had planned on doubling that rain garden for this purpose.
So that's really helpful to you. And maybe the expectation is less from MRB, but I think we, you know, we have a sustainability engineer on, is she involved at all in this project?
Not specifically in the building design, but obviously overall, you know, as Eric shared about the rain garden that was designed for future expansions, that would be expanded as part of this. And as you can kind of see in the far.
The solar, the solar panel.
The solar field we have.
Yep.
That was designed to handle 70 to 80% of our load across the community. If we can build a more efficient building here, better heat, better lights, everything else, that'll reduce our, our load. And then when we take the old 1950s, 60s, 70s, 80s, go on down the line, building down, that will further reduce our load. So we'll get closer to, that's usually the design of, of solar panels is you want to design not to your 100%, because you're hoping that as you have new facilities, make them more energy-efficient. You get closer, so you get down to the 70, 80%. So I'm expecting this building, while much bigger, will be more energy-efficient than what we have today.
And we're one of the very few town complexes that have those solar panels as well, field, the solar field.
Yeah, so they're not on the building, but they're on the property. So they're serving this building, they're serving the DPW along with that.
Yeah, and I'm not really always looking for an ROI. You know, I think even if we end up spending more money, we should take this into account and try to be more responsible that way.
There are some things, and this picture may do some justice. If you actually look at kind of the ridge line along the building itself, you'll see that it does kind of tip up on the one side. You know, one of the things was the idea to put windows in along that to bring in more natural light, to minimize the amount of, you know, of actual electricity and lighting that would need to be used in the garage space to help provide more natural light and help, you know, further reduce our energy costs and utility bills.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's it for me, thank you.
Yeah, me.
Just a couple of questions. The proximity to Thousand Acres Swamp, does that cause us any, you know, additional design or engineering details that we need to be thinking about? Or, I know we moved closer to it. That's, I guess, the reason I'm asking.
We do, and knowing that it's there, we had that delineated a few years ago. So we wanted to get out ahead of that and know exactly where that was. So we did hire through MRB to have that wetland delineated, knowing that it is close. But we know where it is now and, you know, making sure that this building works, you know, within that, that footprint.
Great.
One of the other things during our recent audit with the DEC, because our current salt barn is, you know, essentially placed where this new building would be, you know, one of their concerns was our salt storage and its proximity to the wetlands. By flip-flopping the site, it would actually improve that and get the salt further away from the wetlands.
Okay.
That's a good point.
Just some other questions. As far as, I think you might have touched on a little bit, as far as staff input and involvement, I know this project's been kind of in design for a long time, but was there a process for staff input all the way from management down to labor and that sort of thing, just to provide feedback on accommodations and ideas?
Over time, yes. I have shared the, the plans that MRB has kind of put together. I have shared that with all the DPW or the majority of DPW employees, maybe not the, the very newest.
Sure.
But I have shared that with a number of the employees as well as all of the foremen to get their thoughts and input. You know, just prior to coming here, I was actually talking to a few, a few employees about the specifics with the building and even showing them a few pictures that I had taken when visiting Cicero, is just given how similar the two would be to one another.
Good. I just think it's important, you know, to get that end user's input.
Absolutely.
No matter actually how long they've been on staff. Sometimes, you know, you just, you get an idea that you weren't expecting, and you're like, oh, that's a really good idea. So.
Yeah, good point.
How about the sewer, the existing sewer building? Do they have their own accommodations? I know we've toured it, but I just can't remember, you know, as far as an eating area, that sort of thing.
So they.
Was the intent that they would utilize this new space?
Correct. They, they do not have their own break room. They do have, they do have restrooms, and they do have lockers within kind of their building. However, they do come over to, to our existing, you know, what we consider to be the highway garage. It's really highway and parks. parks. Was just highway prior to parks kind of coming up from Channing-Fulbrook Park and moving out of there. They, everyone within DPW comes over to kind of our existing building to use the same break room. That's where everyone, you know, anytime we do any type of training, if we do a big group lunch, you know, as they come over, that's where everyone sits together.
So that's built in to what you've proposed?
This break room and the 72 seats provides accommodations for everyone.
Great. And then the existing pole barn, that's fairly new, I guess, in comparison to everything else there. What's the plan for that after this is in place, as far as, you know, vehicle storage? And then I know right now, that's primarily, I think, the smaller?
It's the pickup trucks. And that would continue to be used for those pickup trucks and kind of smaller late-duty equipment, you know, occasionally, and especially come summertime, you know, the parks department may park some of their tractors in there. I know they've got kind of one of the new mini-wheeled loaders that we just purchased in there. That would continue to be used for those, with the idea that these 26 bays would be the heavy-duty trucks, the, you know, all of our dump trucks, our loaders, everything that's, I guess, too big to fit in that pole barn itself.
Gotcha. Okay. And then on the front of the building, I remember seeing this in an earlier design, a lean-to. Can you just talk again as to what the intent would be for that?
Sure. So that lean-to, and if you actually look at the picture, kind of just behind where the plow's starting to come out of the building, that portion, it follows the same roof line and slope coming down. It would be a covered area without actually physically having walls or being a heated conditioned space. So it would give us the ability to park something like a road tractor and our lowboy, get it out of the weather, out of the rain, out of the snow, without needing to physically build the building big enough to bring it inside every time.
Gotcha. Okay. And then lastly, just a question on ventilation systems. I know the current building, that was one of the things that, I guess, jumped out at me initially was the low ceilings and all these diesel motors that start up every day. And, you know, I know engines have gotten better with emissions and that, but I just wondered, is there a specific ventilation system built into this to, you know, address any concerns there might be with diesel emissions inside the building?
I'm not a mechanical engineer, so I'm going to tread lightly, but it's certainly something we take into account. We'll probably have multiple exhaust systems, depending on the space, whether it's a fabrication and welding space, whether it's a repair space where motors might be running, or if it's just the main vehicle garage space. So we certainly take that into consideration because we have to meet code. So there's multiple different scenarios.
All right, great.
It will be much healthier than the current building.
Yeah, yeah, imagine.
And I've got pictures of, some interior pictures that I took of Cicero's building that I'd be happy to send to you after the meeting.
All right, great.
I know that staff, along with Eric, some staff here, the other day, we got a chance to take a look at the Webster, the plant, the Webster facility, along with their new plans. And they're very similar to what we're going through, and they're hopefully to go out to bed, I think, this summer. So it would be encouraging to be able to watch them and see how they're doing. I would encourage maybe all of us to go over there and, as well as come back and take tour, another tour of our facility, because you see the exact same thing, the backup of the trucks, having to, when you're right there and see them, having to move a truck to get a truck out. I mean, it's very inefficient and how they're operating as well as us. I mean, this is a, really a 66-year-old building that needs to be, needs to come into the, into the, it needs into this century, so for whatever. But I appreciate, thank, no more questions, or we'll have, I appreciate, thank you very much for coming and answering some questions. Thank you, Eric, for your, the board at this time. We have a lot to think about, you know, that's one of the pieces. We'll take it back and we'll, we'll come back and do some work on our part. Unless everybody, any more questions on that?
Just one. I really like what Akadid said about sharing with all of DPW, and not expecting you to blow up the pictures as largely as we have for the Clark House, but if we can just disseminate them in a common area and solicit feedback, if it comes in the next two weeks or so.
And I can say I have done that, and actually the rendering that's on the screen right now, as well as the other rendering, I actually have those on large poster boards that I've already, I've put out in the break room a number of times. They sit in front of my desk. So anyone that actually ever comes in to see me or talk to me throughout the day, they look down, that's the first thing they see.
Okay, great.
Great. And we'll get with you and schedule some tours for us to go in as well.
Sounds great.
Thank you again for your time. Appreciate it.
Drive safely, which hopefully
Thank you.
Not terrible out there.
So I'll give you a couple of minutes there. And next on the agenda here, we have the Plan Architecture Facilities discussion. And this, Mr. Valentine's going to lead us on that. We have our guests coming up. Chris, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, so with us tonight is Plan Architecture. They'll be here to share some updates with the board. So as the board remembers, we've hired them to do three different evaluations. So what they're going to share tonight is initially to do an evaluation of the Town Hall facility, look at where we are currently, look at, you know, future expansions, you know, assess our current condition of the building, current spacing, everything else. They'll go through that. Subsequent to that, they did begin studying and talk with the rec department, coming out of the rec master plan, looking at, you know, facilities for them into the future. And then if, when the rec department did leave and started into a new building, look at what would a retrofit or rehab of that building look like for the courts and for the library. So with that, I'll turn that over to Chris and let him jump into a little bit more.
Thanks. I'm Chris Lopez with Plan Architectural Studio. I have with me Cortland Knapp, who's also been working on some of these studies. As Mark mentioned, we've been working on a few studies that are at various levels of completion. They're pretty much high-level conceptual studies. And I think I can get through kind of high-level overview of them in about 15 minutes. And then we'd be hoping we would answer any detailed questions that you might have about any of them. So just a quick background. Over the last few years, we've been assisting the town with the assessment of potential municipal buildings through various studies with the goal to address the town's need through potential renovations, additions, and new buildings. As I mentioned, currently, these studies are in various levels of completion. Here's an executive summary. Starting with the Penfield Town Library, in the summer of 2021, we were asked to study the town library with a focus on renovating the existing building, to focus on the exterior entrance, main entry foyer, circulation desk area, the young adults area, and the children's area. That study was paused very early in that process due to staffing changes of the library. There's a new librarian, and I think new board members for the library board. So really, we got to the point of just assessing the existing building, and we're put on hold on that project. Recently, we were, Rhonda Rossman, the new librarian, reached out to us, so we're excited to kind of ramp that up again and kind of to start it up. But just some basic statistics about the library, where the library building, where it resides. It's 1985 Baird Road. It's a former elementary school. Current occupants in that building are three entities. The library, which, the total building's about 54,000 square feet. The library occupies about 54% of that. The community center, about 31%, and the courts, about 15% of that building. We were asked to just give very high-level ballpark construction costs of what it might be, and I can talk more about that later on, to do renovations in the building. So we did a real, very high-level cost projection, which would be renovating within the library and also potentially expanding into the community center space at a rough number of about 8.8 million, and I can talk about more of that later. At this point, as I mentioned, we're waiting for the library to set up a meeting. We're hoping to do that very shortly. So that's that study. Then, in the spring of 2021, we were asked to form a space study for the town of Penfield, the Town Hall. The focus on this was to assess the current and future space needs and the potential to reconfigure the space to better serve the public and staff. Various options were explored, resulting in a concept that includes potential renovations and potential additions. Some of these components include the reorientation of the building layout, so that departments with higher day-to-day public interface would be located on the first level, departments such as the building and zoning department, town clerk, and assessor's office, and then other departments which are less accessed on a day-to-day basis by the public, to be located on the upper level. That would be planning and zoning, human resources, finance, and the supervisor's office. We also looked at providing space for current and anticipated staff growth, addressing key interdepartmental adjacencies, creating more meeting spaces for staff as well as boards within the building, create a centralized service lobby where building and zoning and town clerk assessor could be assessed by the public, more of a one-stop kind of shop in the central atrium space on both levels, providing enhanced security within the building, upgrade the building systems, including HVAC and lighting, and as well as providing an automatic fire sprinkler for the entire building, including the auditorium. The proposed work would include, potentially, the concept that we looked at. They ranged from renovating within the existing footprint to potentially doing two small additions, symmetrical additions on either side. And the study looked at, it looked at that. They varied in scope and varied in budget. The study also included construction cost estimates provided by our partner, our consultant, LaChase Construction. They did a very detailed construction cost based on this concept, as detailed as they could, based on a concept. We really like including them, especially in bidding climate that we're in now. It's nice to have a professional that's seen numbers every day help with that cost estimation. So that wasn't included in the final study, but I do have that if anybody wants to take a look at that. So some basic Town Hall stats here. Obviously, we're located here at 3100 Atlantic Avenue. The building houses the Town Hall Department's and auditorium that we're in right now. The approximate square footage is about 23,000 gross square feet. The proposed additions would equate to about 2,300 gross square feet. That would be two-story additions on the east, or one on the east, one on the west. The construction cost is estimated at about little over $9 million with the total project cost at about 10.7, which includes soft costs. The study was completed in May of 2022, with the construction manager cost estimates, estimates completed in October 2022. So that's, the numbers are as fresh as October 2022. So that study was completed, and we can provide that to the board for their review. And then last, starting in the summer of 2022, last summer, we're asked to perform a study for the potential of a new community and recreation center, working closely with Penfield's Recreation Director, Andrew Erkowitz. An initial concept had been developed to potentially locate at the north end of the Town Hall site, on open soccer fields and near the Dolmey Lodge. This was, this site was basically just chosen as a study case. We, there are other potential sites for a community and recreation center, but we chose this site as a logical place to do the study. The concept includes a dividable gymnasium to accommodate basketball, volleyball, and four pickleball courts, which we found is very popular, an elevated walking, running track, which is about a tenth of a mile, a senior center, a fitness and dance studio, six flexible, dividable, multipurpose meeting rooms, a community kitchen with cafe and nutritional education demo area, a central common space, staff offices, and equipment storage spaces. The site work would include site utilities associated with the building, site lighting, access drives and parking that would be integrated with the existing drives and parking, a main entry drop-off zone, and food pantry pickup zone, a loading area for equipment, and exterior seating areas integrated with the existing fields and trails. Some basic stats on this study. Now, this study, we're about, I'd say about a third of the way through. We've been asked to kind of halt until we met with the board here. So we're kind of taking it about a third of the way through, working with Andrew. So again, this is located, at least from a study standpoint, the north end of the site with access from Jackson Road as well. The occupancy of the building would house community and recreation program spaces and offices. At the current study, the proposed building is, we're looking at about 45,000 gross square feet, a two-story structure. We do not have a detailed CM, Construction Manager, cost projection as of yet. That will be part of the study. But we have been working with LaChase to develop some rough numbers based on an exist, current building they're working on, a YMCA building. So we have some decently fresh numbers that we use to extrapolate a potential project cost for something like this at about $21.1 million, including soft costs. As I mentioned, the status is that we're in concept phase. We're about a third of the way through this study. And once we are able to finish this, or get about 75% of the way through the study, we'll be able to work with LaChase to hone up the numbers and revise, and get the plan to a point. We would also develop renderings similar to the last project we saw from the DPW and package that. So that's kind of a status of where we are with those three studies. I hope I got through that fairly quickly, and I'm sure there's questions.
The courts? Thank you. The courts?
Oh, well, so the courts, we don't, we haven't really been commissioned to do a study on the courts. We do understand that the courts does need more space. So, yeah, go back to that slide. So what's interesting here is kind of a checker game here, a puzzle. If, you know, if, I think ideally, a community center would be built so that the library could expand, the courts could expand, potentially in the history room area. We haven't really gotten any more detail than that, but this kind of shows how that shift would happen. But to do so, we would need the community center to vacate the building. So that's kind of, we really haven't done any study on the courts, but we do understand that there is a little bit of additional space that's needed. Is that correct?
Yeah, and I think they're looking at some renovations of their area, but it's, as Chris said, I mean, it's kind of a domino effect, is we're looking at all these facilities. The DPW is kind of number one. The others kind of are all an even number two. But as Chris said, if the board wants to move ahead with moving the rec center out and continuing that, that now opens up a potential space for the library, for the courts, so then that, you know, could continue from there. So until they move out, it's hard to get too far into the next step until, you know, some of the other dominos fall. So they're just looking to see if we want to continue the studies, complete those, and then, you know, get some direction from the board.
I just wonder about courts, you know, because some, you know, some towns keep their courts with their Town Hall. And, you know, back in the day, the courts were upstairs at the Town Hall. And the only issue I've ever had with where the courts are is it's near the library and it's rec center, and there's, you know, there's people
And that's one of the reasons.
Being taken back and forth in handcuffs and so on. You got children and so on.
That's one of the reasons, looking of pulling the rec center out of there, keeping the courts on the backside. The library would be focused on the front side, so at least you'd have greater separation of those two groups. Remove the kids and the recreation, you know, move the senior center over, you know, here if this is the chosen spot. Combine those together, and then, you know, that can be better configured over there and kind of separate those two elements a little bit more.
And that footprint over there, where the, where everything, the library and the community center and the courts are right now, we're pretty much busting in there? I mean, we don't have a room, right, to?
We own, basically, we own to the edge of the parking lot, pretty much. We don't own the property around it. We're surrounded by the school district, so there is no room to expand the building or, you know, that property any larger. That's just the space we have.
Something to think about.
One of the items I just wanted to share, and Chris, was when he came and did the evaluation of the Town Hall, they did an as-built of the Town Hall and went around and interviewed everybody in all the departments. So they made appointments with all the departments, met with all the departments, talked about their future needs, expansions, you know, where do you see, you know, growth in your own department? You know, so again, we can kind of look at, you know, rightsizing for the future. This building was built in '65. There were 17,000 people in Penfield in 1965. 2023, there's 40,000 people in Penfield. And now we need, again, our staff needs to continue to grow to serve the population, to be here for our residents. So we did one small addition in 2001. Councilman Cole remembers that. We added the foyer that everybody comes in these days. We added that small upstairs area where the assessor is now, and the elevator. So that was a small expansion in 2001. So we're even over 20 years of any, you know, addition or renovation to this building. So we're just looking to So we're just looking, we're more than double size of the community and our residents that we're serving in the same size, same-sized building. So that's, again, why the board, you know, hired them to come on and be a consultant and look at these, at these facilities.
And I think we all know, I mean, the cost to us seem, you know, 21 million seems like a lot, but when we're spending close to a half a million dollars on some bathrooms, I mean, I think we can relate that, you know, things have changed, that, you know, the costs are, you know, costs go up, and something for, to get a, you know, a community rec center, this is, we're going to have to really chunk it down and think, look at this. So, any more, any other questions, board? I do appreciate so much your, your coming tonight and sharing this with us. Again, another thing, we got to take some soak time on and take a look at it, talk about it as a board, so appreciate it, Mark, and for sharing it.
Chris, can I just ask that you circulate the present, the slide deck?
Yeah.
And I think there were status reports that you weren't able to reference tonight, if you can just circulate that as well.
Sure.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, anything you need, we'll provide. I guess, Mark, one other question was, we're kind of, as I mentioned, we're kind of in a stalling, the library, we're going to get restarted.
Okay.
But with the rec center, we'd really like to get direction on whether we can continue or should continue with that study. We'd really like to continue it if, if the board feels that makes sense. And then we will have more clear idea of what the actual scope and budget would be. We just prepared this just to give you kind of a high-level overview, and, you know, we really would like to get through the study to, to kind of get an idea of what we're really looking at.
Sure. I'd like to pause on the study until at least we determine the next steps with the other projects that we have on the agenda tonight, and then I think on balance with the DPW, which I understand is a higher priority. So before we expend on stuff.
Yeah, and I think, I think we just need to kind of see the funding options that we have internally through finance department and talk about some of those things, you know, just to see what that looks like.
And the library, too, since you need to talk to the library and figure out their needs.
Yep.
And we'll certainly circle back, have Mark and circle back with you on after we have some discussion about it.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting we delay, but, but I think there's just some conversations that will need to take, take place, obviously.
Yes.
So we'll keep it on our, we.
Forward agenda.
Great.
Appreciate that you're in a holding pattern.
Yeah.
So we'll definitely, you know, I know you're waiting on us.
And we understand that, yeah. Thank you.
Thanks a lot, appreciate it.
All right, have a good night, thank you.
Thanks, you too.
And the next order of business is a public hearing we have tonight to consider the mixed-use development district, the revised local law. I'll wait till Carrie gets up, Carrie Ivors is gonna, I, are you running the board there on that, Carrie?
Yeah, I'm just bumping.
Oh, okay. So I should first ask, our attorneys here tonight, councils here, is this a public hearing in order for us?
Yes, it is.
Thank you, sir. So Carrie, did you want to give us a little preview again?
I am happy to. As you recall, at one of our previous work session meetings, town staff presented the town board with revised draft local law to amend the mixed-use district regulations as well as section of 250-2.2, which is terms defined to either edit or add definitions that relate to the mixed-use development district. So the mixed-use development regulations, the revised draft local law, were added to the town's website, they were made available in the clerk's office. We have, since they were released, received a couple of comments that were circulated to the town board for your review and continued consideration. So tonight's public hearing is intended to allow anybody who wanted to come and speak in person to share their comments with the board as it relates to the updated revised local law.
Perfect, thank you. Sue, I should ask, is any, our clerk, has anyone signed up to speak?
I have not.
Is there anybody from the audience who would like to speak? Yes, sir. If you'd like to come up to the microphone, please. Thank you. Either one. Sure, that's fine, right here. If you just give us your name and your address, sir.
Hi, my name is Bill Price, and I live at 305 Sylvan Road in Brighton.
Thank you, Bill. Welcome.
I'm not entirely sure who I'm representing tonight, whether it's just myself. I am a landscape architect with SWBR and have been involved with two of the major projects in the mixed-use district. I did, before coming, I did prepare some comments to the revised draft that I did send to, Carrie, she'll get those probably tomorrow.
Great, I've already forwarded them to the town board while we're sitting here. Oh, thank you.
Okay, so in, in general, we were invited to participate in a stakeholder discussion with yourself and other, other members of the planning and engineering staff. I think that the resulting document has addressed what I think we found as the majority of some of the contentious issues that are, what I would consider the objective issues associated with the mixed-use regulations. You know, going through the process with two, process with two projects, we found some things that didn't quite align, and these are the things that you do find out once a, a regulation is put to the test, and you actually have real projects to kind of walk through the process with and look at definitions of different terms. And so we, I think that this second draft has very, done a very nice job in looking at all of those particular objective issues, where I, I think things, and this is really kind of a discussion point, that there are subjective issues that continually pop up in, have popped up in these applications, and these subjective issues are not addressed in the particular amendments. And the subjective issues get into matters of aesthetics, matters of what is and isn't an appropriate percentage of non-residential uses, how, how the percentage of non-residential to residential mix is actually calculated, and really just the, the difference between the objectives of a developer and how they're guided by consulting teams and the town. And I think this is the, the point where we all kind of have to take a step back and look at, you know, is, is the regulation accomplishing what it was intended to do? And that could go back as far as 10, 12 years, when the first idea of mixed-use development came about and you went through and did a seeker review. And I think, I don't believe the planning board or the town board are currently working with the most up-to-date information available when it comes to market analysis and economics. I think you've been heard, probably, you've heard loud and clear that the percentages of non-residential that are put forth in the documents and have been consistently put forth in the documents are simply not achievable. You have a total land area in the town of 3% commercial use, yet this mixed-use area is asking for 20%. Now, I recognize there may be differences between the permitted uses within a commercial district and a mixed-use district, so that isn't, shouldn't be necessarily an apples-to-apples comparison. However, the disparity, the difference between 3%, which is what the town has, and the 20% required is a substantial difference. I'm not saying that, that it can't be achieved, I'm just saying we're not all working with good enough information. We've been through COVID, we've seen how that's dramatically changed office environments and workplace habits, we've seen a, a major shift in retail and what, you know, delivery and Amazon and similar services have done to the retail industry, and what it's really done to kind of Main Street retail, which is ultimately what I believe this mixed-use development district is trying to achieve, is something very similar to a village or, you know, a town center. Yet we're working, again, against, you know, we're, we're fighting, and I'm the chairman of the planning board in Brighton, and we're, we're faced with that as well, where, you know, the best-laid plans, you know, are, are thrown aside because everybody wants a drive-through, and we don't want drive-throughs, and we want walkability, and we don't want, you know, storefronts on our main boulevards and highway, or not highways, but our main streets, you know, lined with, you know, these financial planners and with, you know, blank, blank windows. We want to see retail and we want to see activity, and I know that's what this wants to achieve. So I think you owe it to yourselves to make sure you're working with the most up-to-date economic and market analysis of data, and make sure that, you know, the revised MUD is just as filled with mathematical metrics in here as it was before. And they are clarified, there's more clarified, but we're, we continue to try to achieve this desired outcome through mathematical metrics. And is that really what we want to do? If you do look at this closely, it's, it's laced with percentages and dimensions, and is that really what we care about? Or do we care about the character and the quality of the spaces that are, that are built? And what are the other ways that these could be achieved? So one of the comments that I made in the work session with stakeholders, and I, I think I made the statement anyway, was that, you know, that the, this document needs to outline the process that developers and their consulting teams need to go through. What, what has been done in this document now is clarify the existing process. The existing process is what's not working, but the existing process is what's, is what is defined. You have a, a plan review committee which consists of planning and engineering staff, you have a planning board, and you have consultants that are on here, that are working to make sure that this project complies with the intent. Everybody has good intent, it's just that, you know, I'm a planning board chairman, and I don't want to see a plan come to the planning board that's already been vetted and looked at by town staff. I tell them, you bring me back all of the tissue sketches, show me the, the way that you came about, the proposal that you came about, so that we, the planning board, can see this. We talk directly to the planning board, and I suggest you bring in your consultant. We were never allowed under either project to talk directly to your architectural consultant that just made a presentation on a project for you. Their comments were delivered to the, to the planning board, but those comments were sometimes used and sometimes not used. In the case of one of the projects, the planning board denied one of the projects early on, yet the, the architectural consultant said that the project as designed complied with every aspect of the MUD. That's the subjective part that this document is not getting at. This is the part that you guys all need to take a step back, whether it's a matter of continuing the moratorium or not, you need to take a step back and say, is the process achieving the outcomes that we want? Right now, I'd have to say, you're not getting the outcomes that you want. So I think it's a matter of taking the document that, that is full of lots of metrics and getting this down to something that is more qualitative and addresses the character of the development and not be so full of mathematics and compliance metrics.
So, Bill, I have a question, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
So, and you were talking about the mathematics there, where we have 3% total lamb commercial, which is right here in Penfield, and you're saying that the MOD, the new mixed-use development is requesting 20%.
Yes.
What would you say, based on the metrics, would be closer to what we should be, or you think we should be looking at?
You should be closer to the 12 to 15%.
Okay.
Would be. But, and, again, we're talking about metrics. I would, I would say the primary objective would be to sit down with planning staff and the design consultant, and maybe somebody from the planning board, in, in a pre-application meeting. I don't believe pre-application meetings should just be staff, because it's not just staff that's ultimately reviewing the project, and staff does not approve the project. So you would sit down and say, we want to see the retail, and we want to see the, the activity that's created along the street in this portion of the project. You've got several projects, you know, the, two of the projects have commercial and retail buried deep in the project. It's never going to, you know, it's going to be hard to see it from Atlantic or 250 or, you know, from the YMCA. It's not going to be, you're not going to see that. So what's the point of meeting the mathematical metric, yet that activity that you're hoping to, you know, create along your streetscape is buried deep in the project? So, okay, I meet, I meet 20%, but I haven't achieved anything that we really want to have happen.
Okay. Thank you, okay, appreciate it. Point, what, points are taken. I'm making some notes here.
Thank you.
Board, question? Thank you, thank you, Bill, appreciate that. Anybody, is there anybody else that would like to speak tonight to this public hearing? Once, twice? Okay, I think we're going to close this, I'm going to close this public hearing for this evening, and I appreciate you all coming, your comments will be well taken into consideration here. I, we're going to take a couple minutes, and we're going to set up down in front, so if I can take a quick recess, please, and then we'll just move some tables around here, and we'll come back out and set, set the rest of our work session. Thank you. Okay, we're back now in our new location down here for our work session, more cozier, I guess. We're on to action items. First one on our action items is 21 Five Mile Line Road. It's administrative approval to revise a previously issued CUP for Newburgh Piano. Ms. Ives?
So, this is a previously issued administrative conditional use permit. At the time, it was a mixed business with residential. Since opening up the piano studio, the owner of the business, that's not the owner of the building, has vacated the portion of the residential unit.
Okay.
Because he and his family have bought a home elsewhere and want to utilize the interior space of the building for additional piano studio-related activity. The, I think it's more of an opportunity to spread out versus concentrating in the piano studio portion. We weren't seeing a major change in how the building was being used. The owner of the building granted permission, we have that in writing, has no issues or concerns. There is sufficient parking to support the use and so, even though this is a very minor change, the way our code is written, the town board has to provide its approval. So, that's, I'm just asking for a vote.
Yeah, we reviewed this.
Yes, we did.
I don't have an issue. I think we can breeze through this part.
Yep. Okay. Excellent. All those, we don't even have to vote on that. So, thank you.
Actually, if you won't mind taking a vote, that'd be wonderful.
We should probably take, you do want us to.
So moved that we allow for the expansion of this business into the residential, formerly residential area.
Candace will second.
Yes, I'm going to second with the administrative approval request to revise the previously issued CUP.
Perfect.
And there's the owner of Red.
Aye. Oh, he is here. Oh, I'm sorry.
Cole, Lynda.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Ackenden.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much, you came to, for coming to the meeting. Thank you. You're all approved. Thank you. I don't think you could hear, talk to. Okay. Item B has been withdrawn. We're going to go right to item C, which is the Shadow Pines Site and Recreation Facilities Bid Documents. Mr. Valentine, where do, where do we stand on?
Thank you. So, as this board has seen many times prior to this, we've worked on the development for the northeast corner of the Shadow Pines property. I highlighted on the page for pickleball, for bathrooms, to bring in a new parking lot to set that area. So, we've been working with the BME group. They've had that design completed. I'm just trying to pull up my latest documents. So, shared that site plan with the board. I'm just looking to see if the board is ready to move ahead to put those out to bid for that. I know we've been talking about this for quite some time. They've done the preliminary portion of submitting the plans to the outside development agencies. So, again, that same corner, here's Atlantic Avenue at the top of your screen, Wayland Road on the side. So, they've already gotten the approvals on our behalf from the county DOT, the Health Department, the Water Authority, to tap off and bring utilities in, so establishing a bathroom in this location, coming in with a parking lot, showing the pickleball courts on the south end, a shelter, the necessary stormwater facilities, pathways that connect in with the existing pathways around the property, and then doing some general grading to allow for some open areas. So, those won't be striped fields, but just open play area. Then, two options for alternate bids is for some playground areas. Those areas would be fenced, so they are, no, they're shown close to Atlantic Avenue, but those would be fenced areas. So, with inside that areas, the kid would have a play area, they'd have the rubberized surface and then, you know, play elements with that. So, then there would be gates at either end, so those kids would have a safe area to play. Those would be bid as alternates, not knowing the overall cost, you know, for this overall development, but obviously bringing the utilities in, storm sanitary, and then as well as the development of the pickleball courts was the first part and that was through, allocated through the ARPA funds that this board was looking to move ahead with that. One question, as we're finalizing the design on the bathroom, is whether it would be the board's intent to have this open as a 365 all-season bathroom or whether it would be seasonal or all-year. Basically, would it be a heated space or not is one question.
Well, are most bathrooms, like over at Roffus?
Some are, some are not. Eric can probably speak better to that of what our.
What's about the bathroom?
Let's steal the microphone. So, the bathroom that we have back here in Veterans Memorial Park is year-round. The new one that we're looking to add by the softball fields will be year-round. Harris Wayland Lower is year-round. The portion that's accessible from the outside part of the overall lodge building is year-round. However, the upper bathrooms are seasonal.
Yeah.
Roffus Park itself is seasonal.
Is it really?
Yes.
Correct. We, the intent, we, and it's seasonal because we don't currently have heat in that to keep it, you know, any of the pipes and freezing, so we actually do have to blow out the RPZ. We have to fill it full of antifreeze every year. However, that is a project that we're taking on this year, is to add electric heat to that bathroom so that it can be, it can be year-round in future winter seasons. Unfortunately, we ran out of time to be able to incorporate that prior to this winter, but the intent is that next winter, Roffus Park could be open year-round. It just currently isn't.
Okay, so it's making sense that it should be all season.
Just wanted to clarify with the board, you know, that was the intent as we finalize those pieces. So, just wanted to get, you know, the final blessing from the board, you know, on this to then have BME finalize that and then, you know, we'll be back with a date that it's going to bid and everything else, so that'll be at your March agenda. But just kind of wanted to get the board's blessing to say, "Yes, we're good and yes, we want to proceed." They'll finalize the bathroom, you know, for the all-season and then we'll put that out to bid this spring and then hopefully we'll be summer, break ground this summer to get started.
Sounds good.
Do you have a question, Candace? Yeah?
Yeah, I have a couple questions. I think there was some back and forth as to the number of pickleball courts, 16 or 12?
Currently, we're showing 16, but it's obviously the board's preference of whether we want to phase that or want to do some lesser to start.
And it was 16, of which three are inclusive courts.
The three, yes, three are fully inclusive. The remainder are not fully inclusive with it. But then, this main group here is 12, so then there's four at the bottom. So, if the board wanted to phase that in, this group of four at the bottom could be a future add-on, or whether the board wants to.
You know, phasing in though, you talk about costs and everything, we just talked about phasing in can add to costs. I mean, why not just?
I mean, that's up to the board, yes. I mean, obviously during initial bid, you know, it'll be more cost-effective to do them all at once.
Yeah.
But you can see the absorption of how many courts and how much they're utilized and then add more later on.
It just seems like in, before everything started going way up, you know, the whole supply-demand and everything else, you had a little leeway, but now, you know, if you're going to get the bang for your buck, you really, if we have the money to, the money that's been allocated for this, I think we should just go and bite the bullet and do it, not phase it.
So, I think, if I recall, the argument for 16 courts was to be able to host tournaments.
Correct.
And unless the tournament is fully inclusive, you won't be able to host on these, would they be, let me ask, would they be able to host on inclusive courts?
Yes.
For integrated play?
Yep. The court is the same size, so the dimension of the physical court itself, the inclusive courts just have more space around it to accommodate if people are coming on and off with wheelchairs or other dimensions. So, the physical court doesn't change. It, just the.
Access?
The surface area is a little bit larger.
No, I did look this up at length. The physical space of the, the area for play for inclusive courts is larger than non-inclusive courts. The height of the net is also different to accommodate for persons in wheelchairs or other durable medical equipment.
I mean, they can be adjusted on the height.
Okay.
There's always a ratchet on the, same as a tennis court, that's slightly different than a rec, excuse me, pickleball court. There is a center item that can be ratcheted up or down with a strap that can adjust it so you can, you know, make them accessible to others.
But the demarcations on the courts, because I think, if I recall, the pickleball players said, "If you play on a tennis ball, tennis court or whatnot, the lines get confusing." So, if they are fully inclusive, would those demarcations be like paint? Are they going to be removable?
Say, they're not, these are not going to be striped for tennis at all, so it's not tennis.
No, for inclusive courts.
For inclusive, there are only three that are fully inclusive courts.
So, I guess where I'm getting at is if, if, I don't know the answer to this.
I don't know that either.
But if 16 courts are what's required for tournament play and that's really the only argument for having that many courts at this time, again, taking into consideration that there are other pickleball courts throughout Penfield, I understand that they are lined for other types of play, but if we aren't able to host, if that is the only factor for 16 courts, I would like for the board to consider 12 courts as opposed to 16. But in doing 12, I would still like to hear or to confirm that the site plan would accommodate for inclusive play.
And, correct me if I'm wrong, but the original, when they meeting, I think it was Mr. Frome who was really spearheading all this and interested in these, in the pickleball going, having courts for that, he originally was requesting 12 courts. Is that, that's my understanding?
Way back and then said he wanted to move that to 16 for tournament.
Right. Okay, okay. But see, originally, he was asking for just 12 to begin with.
So, if we scaled it down to 12, do we know how many of those would be inclusive play?
I mean, we can make them all-inclusive play if you want.
Oh.
It's just more pavement area, so we can, it can bigger. The only thing in the bigger courts, you may hear some pushback from the seniors that they got to run farther for the ball. So, that's, it makes, it's farther from the end line to the fence line in an inclusive court than your traditional size. So, you're going to, you'll hear some pushback that with the inclusive courts.
The same issue with using a tennis court.
There's more space around it, so if you miss the ball, it rolls to the fence, you've got to go another 10, 15 feet to get the ball. So, you may hear a little bit of pushback, you know, from the seniors that it just, it makes that space a little bit bigger and the ball will roll a little bit further.
I think I'd be interested in having somebody from, whether it's Mr. Frome or somebody else from, that actually knows the, what.
Sure.
What they're.
We can have somebody from their group come in and speak about that.
They want, yes, or what's desirable, I mean, for that.
Yeah, we could hold on this.
You know, because I think that's something that we're wanting to know. Do we need, you know, how accessible?
Yeah, we can have them, schedule them for your next work session to come in and share an update on that.
Is that something you'd like to see from, see, hear from that or do you want them all to be inclusive? I mean.
That might not work for, like the other, like the ones that are going in in.
In the county?
The county, the ones that are going in Fairport.
I don't know.
I mean, you want, you want inclusion, but if it detracts from the people that are so, you know, wanting to play and suddenly it's mostly the seniors, is this going to be a deterrent?
There is going to be a little push-pull there because the inclusive courts are larger.
Yeah.
So, you'll hear some detraction from the seniors that, you know, it's expanded beyond what they would prefer. They'd prefer, again, the physical boundaries of the court are the same.
Yeah.
It's the area around, it allows for, you know, traversing access, you know, in and around the courts.
Right.
But if you miss the ball, it rolls further to the back to the fence.
Right, that's why it's good to have some.
Further to the side. So, they prefer smaller courts because you don't have to run as far or move as far to go get the ball.
Yep.
Obviously, the inclusive courts, you know, make it, you know, open to everybody. So, that's why we originally had the three inclusive courts and then the remainders were the standard size.
I mean, maybe it's something as simple as just meeting, you know, finding out exactly are we, should we be looking at, you know, what not.
What is the need, what is the need? And the need, we've understood, is they're, they need dedicated pickleball courts because there aren't any in Penfield and they go to Webster and they go to Ellison Park, which is county. And this would help, help a need of the seniors in our community that want to play pickleball outside, because all right now is, well, not even the community center, it's not dedicated because it's, they play pickleball in there without, you can play basketball in there.
Basketball court.
Yeah. I did see them playing.
Yeah, I mean, they, you can make it work. I mean, obviously you can, you know, but it's not ideal. These would be the only dedicated pickleball courts that we have in the community.
That was the point.
Okay, I do have other questions, but if we're going to hold on this anyway else, I'll reserve them.
Okay.
Okay, well, I'll look to schedule them, have them come in on the 22nd and.
Is it questions, do you want answered? I'm sorry.
No.
Is it questions so that they can, that they?
No, these are questions for Mr. Valentine, so.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Well, mine kind is too, but this 200-foot buffer, can you just readjust that? I know we've talked about it in the past, but there's been questions, I know some from the community have asked about, you know, are we restricted completely from being in that 200-foot zone or?
So, the restriction was put in when we bought the property from Dolomite. So, being a quarry, they do blasting, they weren't sure what the development is. So, that's, this dashed line is in here and you can see we're up against it. So, that just doesn't allow us to have parking within it, doesn't allow us to have buildings or structures within it. You can have accessways, so obviously you can see we're putting the driveway entrances in and then our parking lot's right up against it. So, the parking lot's outside of it, the pickleball courts are just outside of it, the stormwater facility's inside of it, we do have some paths inside of it. So, it does allow for pathways, it does allow for entrance driveways. Stormwater, they do basically just don't want any physical structure, you know, site improvement within, inside of that 200-foot area.
That was a condition of the sale then?
That was a condition of the sale between us and Dolomite. We've gone back and asked. They've said that condition of the sale was the condition of sale, so we've proceeded forward with the 200-foot buffers, the 200-foot buffer. I know there's.
It's a deed restriction too, isn't it?
Yeah. So, it's with the land, we've asked for a change on that. That hasn't come to fruition, so that's why the parking lot is where it is. I know people have said it's a little far off the road, but dealing with the restrictions on the property, it's what we bought is, was what we've got to do. But as I say, it does allow for driveways, so we've got driveways through it here and here. We do have walking paths through it.
Mm-hmm.
The stormwater facility, you know, is within that area. You can see that dashed line, the pickleball courts, the bathrooms, the shelters, the parking lot is outside of that 200-foot limit.
Okay. Okay. So, any other discussion tonight? So, we'll hold this for the next work session in March?
And then, we'll let BME know about the heated bathrooms, so we'll come back with some additional information on that.
The bathrooms and.
For the board on that and then we'll ask, you know, for some additional information on the pickleball courts versus the inclusive.
Get some information as what they actually are looking for for site, for.
Yeah, so, okay.
Mark, just one last question. I don't know if we've received this in the past, but is there, can you do an overlay of that over an actual, you know, aerial view of the existing park to see where that lines up?
We can. I mean, I don't have it today and I think they've done it in the past.
Oh, no, no.
But I know there's concern about loss of trees, but, you know, the amount of grading we need to do to rough it all out, unfortunately, there is a fair amount of trees that are in need to go away. We do have a substantial landscape plan and that's in the base bid, excuse me, of the document, is the landscape plan. So, you can just see the grading that's going to need to be done to do the stormwater facility, get the driveway entrances in, comply with DEC green infrastructure, we've got to do infiltration basins, we've got biofilters, we've got stormwater ponds, you know, and then rough grading for the fields, for the parking lot to make the stormwater work. Unfortunately, yeah, we're going to have to take out a significant portion of trees that are there, but then looking at the landscaping plan, that's included right in the base bid. So, from, yes, we're planting smaller trees, but from day one, once the site is graded and once the site is completed, come back in and plant all the landscaping planted around the pond. We've got the biofilters in the parking lot, so the sustainability, we're incorporating that into the design, handling the stormwater on-site. Since we're in MS4 and we're exceeding five acres of area, this actually had to be, normally we review it, it had to go to the DEC for review, so it's already gone to the DEC for their review. They've approved it. So, that was kind of an additional step for us. Normally, we're reviewing other people's plans since we're the municipality, had to go to a higher agency, so they reviewed it. So, it does incorporate stormwater ponds, but between all of that, yes, unfortunately, it's going to take out a lot of trees at that corner, but that's why specifically this board wanted a landscape plan that was comprehensive to put back in there and, you know, plant from day one. So, soon as we're done, that'll be part of this, plant that back in and, you know, with So soon as we're done, that'll be part of this, plant that back in and, you know, within a few years, it'll be growing back up. And I remember when they planted Rothfuss Park, that was a farm field and we graded, every tree was gone on Rothfuss Park. That was 10 years ago. You go by Rothfuss Park today and the whole front and you got big willow trees, the plants have come back in, the trees have taken off. So you can see how well that's reestablished itself. And that's been, maybe I'm off with 10 years, maybe it's 12 years, but it hasn't been many years that that's regrown and reestablished itself from what was a wholly cleared farm field. So if you landscape it well at the beginning, it'll, you know, within a few years, you know, be back and, you know, be a beautiful asset to the community.
So Mr. Valentine actually answered my question. I was going to ask, you know, with the site plan here, if there was any appetite for potentially considering a different location in Shadow Pines so that the infrastructure that we're going to be investing here with the plumbing, parking lot, water and electricity can benefit other properties on the site. And I was trying to give some deference to the back nine being reserved as parkland. I understand that the former Shadow Pines Land Use Committee in 2019 had, you know, made recommendations to keep that undisturbed. So I was trying to look at other areas again on the parcel, trying to consider if we did move that site, what potential impacts, you know, if any, there would be with, with respect to the project. But it sounds like if we were to, then we would have to restart with the approval process and get the.
Fortunately, set us back probably a year to readjust that and to move that. And as you stated with that land use committee, this northeast corner was the one area that, you know, they supported for more intense development to have bathrooms. Obviously, we've been talking about, and we'll talk about the Clark House and Barn shortly, but they were supportive of leaving that back nine, you know, as untouched and, you know, more natural state as possible. So that's kind of what pushed us to this northeast corner, closer to the school district, closer to a state highway, kind of got more of a major intersection there and keep the traffic closer to the highway, the roadway, and then, you know, keep that development and preserve more of the rest of it and more of a.
So I have a question then. If we were to move with the bids now, could, would we be able to just get the differential of the differences between a 16-court layout versus a 12-court layout, just to keep the project moving?
Yeah. I mean, at the same time, I'll look at that. We could also bid it as an alternate as well. So we could do a base bid of 12 courts and then ask for an alternate for the four additional courts. So you've got it right in there and then the board could, you know, make that decision once the bids come in. We're already doing alternates for the two playgrounds. Now, playgrounds are quite expensive, but depending on what bid.
It would be nice, because otherwise we're, we're going to be behind in the, in the bid process.
Right. No, that sounds good. We still get the information we need to find out about.
Yeah.
As long as we can.
So, yeah, we can bid those as alternates too. And then you've got the quote right from the contractor, you know, in that.
Is there a cost for alternates?
Nope. So it's just, it's just the way how you do the bid package. So in the bid package, it just says base bid is these items. It's the grading, it's the utilities, the parking lot, all of it. Base bid would be 12 pickleball courts. Four would be alternate number one. Alternate number two would be the small child playground. Alternate number three would be a bigger child playground.
And the playground area could be.
We make all those and then you come in and then you want to award the base bid. It's X dollars and then we want to go with alternate one and alternate three. You can do that and the board has.
It's all real numbers and then you won't be.
Yeah, the board can have their discretion. Once you see the numbers come in, you can pick and choose from, you know, nope, we just want to do the base bid. Here we are.
If we want to do.
One, two, and three. You can do one, two, and three. You can do one and, you know, any option.
It creates like a menu essentially for the board.
I do like à la carte.
Gives the board some choices in that.
Do you like to move it?
Any other concerns, comments, questions? Okay. Then I would move that we move forward with submitting this project to bid on the condition that we include the alternates as discussed with the variations in pickleball court size, variations with the children and green areas, children play areas and green areas. And for such areas, specifically the children areas, to allow for inclusive play.
Okay. Move by Clandest, second to by. Mr. Ackenden?
Second.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Draw.
Aye.
Call.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Ackenden.
Aye.
Great. Thank you. You prepare a resolution then for the March 15th meeting?
It'll be March 15th, yes.
Perfect. Thank you very much, Mr. Valentine. So we, okay. So we move ahead to our next item, which is the Clark House and the Clark Road Barn foul-up. So if you all recall, remember on, just last week, February 15th, we had about 13 speakers here, 10 emails. The majority of both of these discussions really centered around, quite a bit around the Clark House barn from salvage, salvaging, repurposing it. So tonight I'd like to, for us to take this at the work session in two parts. If we could discuss the Clark House homestead and what we'd like to do with that, and then the Clark Road barn with the condition that it doesn't really make, you know, sense to tie them together now. We'd like to move ahead and discuss the Clark Road, the timeline, the Bergman, I think you maybe want to bring that up, Mark. You probably haven't. The Clark House plan, the project timeline, you know, we've had this since plan architecture since 2021. So we were presented, the town board was presented the first assessment of the buildings and findings again in 2021. And then we remember COVID slowed all this process a little bit. So when, I think even in January 22 here, we were still discussing it. We were also wearing masks still. So COVID has been around. But our design on concept was presented to the town's town staff in October of 2022. And then we looked at it at the first meeting in January, the work session. So there's two actually options on here, I believe, that we were looking at the other night, that we really, I think, probably concentrated on talking about, which was, I think we all agreed that we would like to see a lodge there. We also, at that time, we're talking about, once you, correct me if I, if you're, I'm not reading what we talked about, either to replicate, which would be a total new house part of that, that the Clark House, which would, and by replicate, I mean, it would be something similar to what was done at Canadego National Bank. They actually replicated that, started from and made it look exactly like, you know, what the original tavern. Or renovate, which conceivably would almost be used, if I'm reading them right correctly, with many, and many products that are going to almost get us to, and Mr. Tate can tell us that, it almost gets us right back to using a lot of product, a lot of new.
Sure.
Pieces.
Yep. So given that the, the original house and certainly modern building codes did not exist in the early 1800s when the house was constructed, it is a balloon frame structure. If, you know, as we did the, the selective demo, just to kind of open up holes in the walls to determine, you know, what damage, what unforeseen issues may be found kind of beneath the, you know, plaster and lath, the drywall, wanted to kind of see what exactly, you know, was there and what condition it was in. Looking at any of the given walls, they're all different. It appears that someone different built each different wall.
Is this the basement of the house?
Yeah. So this is.
Okay. Good.
You know, this is actually under that original historic kind of portion of the building. You know, there's quite a bit of mold. There, you know, it is a, you know, a cobblestone, you know, laid foundation. Certainly, you know, has its own water infiltration issues. Because of that, there is no underdrain underneath the concrete slab. In fact, the only way for water to actually get to the, the crock and the sun pump that is down there is it has to sheet flow across the slab, which, you know, further promotes, you know, mold growth. You know, given that the, the actual height of the basement, you've got to duck your head to kind of get around and walk through there. You know, there are, utilities have been added. You can see the ductwork. You can see the gas piping hanging down. There's, you know, the utility panels on the walls. There's electrical hanging down. If, if the house were to be rehabilitated, you'd have to essentially strip the walls down to, you know, bare studs inside and out. The Historic Preservation Board has set the precedent that modern building materials can be used when restoring and trying to preserve historic structures. So vinyl siding or some type of, you know, hardy board composite siding could be used. New energy efficient, you know, double or triple pane windows could be used. You know, energy efficient doors, you know, storm doors can be used in it. It doesn't need to be the original, you know, wood frame, single pane windows, you know, from the 1800s. You know, certainly want to be conscious of, you know, energy code and efficiency with the building as well. You know, to be able to do a lot of that, if you're going to change all of the doors, you're going to change all of the windows, you're going to be kind of stripping down, you know, even portions. You're going to lose all of the interior finishes within the building as well as needing to change the outside. So if you, while it could physically be done, really the only thing you're saving is the physical framing of the building. You know, nothing necessarily on the inside. Or I guess it, it's not going to be the exact same, you know, lath and plaster walls that, that were once there or siding on the outside. It is an option. You know, certainly from a maintenance standpoint, it's going to come with some difficulties as well. Whereas at least if, you know, the board, you know, wanted to move in the, the direction of doing a replication, as you drive by, as you take a look, it would look exactly the same. We have done 3D renderings of inside and out. So we have the exact footprint, exact kind of model and plan of what it would be. You know, the cost difference was very minimal between the two. However, you'd be using modern building materials. Everything would be to code. It'd be.
So Eric, when you, can you just go back to that picture? Like when you, for example, when you, and I've been in here a couple of times, when you look at it right there, those doors, the walls, they don't look that bad to me. It looks like I'm almost walking into like the George Eastman House or something like that. That's how, I don't know if I'm saying that incorrect, but can't, we can use actual those doors? Those, that actual, like when you're saying.
1832.
But we can use that stair? We can leave that stairway?
That stair would not be compliant to allow public access in on that stair. It's.
It could be left, but you would have to somehow physically restrict access because the landing at the top would not, would not allow for use of the second floor.
But so if you put one, like they do in, in the museums, they put a rope up or a guard up that says you can't go up there.
I mean, you'd have to put a more permanent barrier because we're not, I mean, if this is part of the lodge, it's going to be open to the public insides. You've got to, you'd have to install some barrier structure that people, kids can't just, you know, run up there and, the stairs are too steep. They're not, you know, they don't meet modern requirements. And then obviously then the basement stairs go down below this.
You know, the thing is, we, see, I think this is a good idea, but I don't think, I think the Clark House needs to be rehabilitated, you know, not replicated. But when it's, when it's ready for anyone to go in, you know, we have to maybe have a plan of what it's going to be. And it could be a mini museum. It could be the local history room. It could be something that people could access, but what's to say the storage of documents and so on? I don't know upstairs, but certain things could be stored upstairs, but not have all the public. There's things we could work through, but I think the priority is to get that house back in order. And, you know, the lodge, for instance, we do the lodge. We know that's a need because that's what the people want. It's the lodge. They're always looking for meeting spaces. And this would be so flexible for so many different things. It could raise income that could help us work to do interior improvements to benefit the Clark House, to make it more, you know, a museum-ish thing, more accessible. And Dayton's Corner Schoolhouse, not everybody goes in there, only certain times. I mean, it's, there's opportunities there and I don't, I don't want it to be lost. The best we, I just think this, I think we don't need to, to overplan what's going to happen in the house right now. We just need to get it stabilized and safe. And if that can be done by hooking on to the lodge and having a walkway that's not going to be open to the public until everything's ready, you know, only in certain areas. I mean, that's, I think that's fair, I think.
Okay. You make good points. I mean, about preserving, I mean, because when I see the house preserving it, it doesn't, there's, there's good discussion to have, to have it saved.
I agree with, like, you're looking at these pictures. And so I just wanted to ask, Eric, you talked about, if I understood you correctly, we'd have to tear off all the inside down to studs. Is that what you're indicating? And if so, what, what would be the reasoning for that?
To actually, to efficiently insulate so that this, because we'd be touching more than 50% of the building, we'd be required to bring it into compliance with ADA, but we'd also want to make sure that we're, we're meeting energy code. So to be able to, to actually make the building itself energy efficient, to do it properly, you'd have to open up quite a few of the walls. I mean, just from even a utility standpoint, for the electric, for the heating, for the ductwork.
Fire suppression.
For the fire suppression, the sprinkler system that's in that building, to be able to make sure that everything is in working condition. I mean, a lot of the wiring that we know is in there is, is old. A lot of it, it's, it's old, kind of the paper fiber wrapped wiring. You know, would want to make sure that, that everything is brought up to code and is, is certainly safe so that it can be, you know, preserved for as long as physically possible.
But we could have some, you know, I think this was brought up by some of the public too, that a preservationist, whether it be somebody from the Landmark Society, someone to talk with you, to work with you, not, you know, I don't think Sharon, Shannon is, I mean, she's, she understands stuff. I mean, she'll work with you, but it'd be good to have an outside person that works on this kind of thing on a regular basis because they may have information that you're doing your best to make it safe and everything like that. There might be avenues of, that you haven't looked at, that they've dealt with on different architectural renovations that could, you know, maintain the historical character as much as possible. So I would like to see somebody of that ilk get involved. It'd be a kind of a, it'd make you feel better that you're, you're working with preservationists. You know that that's being addressed. And I think the public would also feel that way.
So I get my, I guess my question for the board, is the intent to, even if we're looking to add on the, the lodge component to the Clark House itself, to have them completely independent from one another as far as kind of use? Because I, and I ask because part of Bergman's, their, their design incorporated using that, you know, the, the footprint and the, the space within that house portion.
They did say that, yeah.
For, you know, you know, kind of some of the, the table and chair storage for a utility closet room.
But there was a, and I think I asked a question. There was another utility room that they could use as well. I mean, there was an option in that main, right in there that we could change, that could be changed or enlarged and so forth. I mean, there is.
And we could. I mean, the only reason I ask is if, if the house is going to be completely separate, that's going to change the overall footprint of kind of the lodge itself. You're either going to cut down on, you know, the, the main event space area to accommodate for, you know, some type of storage closet, utility room and whatnot, or the overall size and footprint of the building is going to need to increase.
I do.
Yeah, I know some of the feedback we received too about the proposed plan, you know, using the house for storage of tables and chairs was kind of disrespectful to the history of the home. And I don't disagree with that. I think that's a valid point.
All right.
If there's a way to preserve it as the home, I think, become an educational tool, you know, a lot of different options, but.
And I thought the Historic Preservation Board made a lot of good points about the opportunities to have this lodge have a historic character in a sense, but you know, that's, it still follows along the Clark House line. So that, you know, and they had some ideas there about what kind of materials to use and everything. I think those were good points could be taken into consideration by Bergman when they, if we go out the bid. But maybe, maybe this is another thing we should talk about before we decide on that, to, that whole seating storage into the Clark House to eliminate it. to, that whole seating storage into the Clark House to eliminate it.
I can certainly reach, you know, back out to Bergman and determine if we're going to try to, if we're going down the path of rehabilitating the house and still at trying to add the lodge to that, but to take out all of kind of the, the components of what they were looking to utilize within the, the actual footprint of the house.
Right.
Or how that makes the, how that changes the footprint of the lodge. I can certainly do that. That is going to be above and beyond the original scope of what Bergman, you know, had, had anticipated within their, you know, their proposal. So that's something that I'll have to have them, you know, work up and then bring back to the board for consideration to amend the contract with them.
Is there a way though now, the way they've, it almost was at, almost the entrance way there to the, to the house? Is there a way to, really, other than the utilities, the utilities were outside on that, was there utilities that needed for the rest of the facility in, in that, in the house? For example, if the plan, if the Clark House goes through right now, just closing off the house, that door to the house, don't they have all the utilities and everything they need right in that whole footprint of the lodge right now?
No. So you don't have your electric panel? You don't have your water meter and your backflow prevention, your RPZ? You don't have, likely have your furnace, you know, the, what's kind of shown in the white rectangle.
I thought that's where they all were.
To the left of the bathrooms, that's likely the, you know, their, the air conditioner itself.
Oh, I thought that separate utility room was just an over, I didn't realize there was all utilities.
That's going to be the actual utilities coming in. So your electric, your gas, your, you know, for your furnace, your water meter. That's, that was the intent with using that kind of part of the room and why you, if you were going to use the footprint as designed, that that would be off to the very side because it could be a locked door, you know, for essentially town facility staff access only.
Okay. So would, they would have to re-adapt their plan?
You'd need to find a new spot within the building or add on another component or lengthen the building to incorporate that.
What's your appetite? I'm thinking that that's something the board is interested in seeing.
Yes.
So I think we.
Perhaps it could be on the south wall, you know, more redesigned, kind of independent of how it is now. I mean, just an idea, but.
You know, I guess my initial thought is that you may be able to actually lengthen the building or push the, kind of the event space further to the north and where it currently shows that coat closet, maybe making that larger, you know, storage room for those tables and chairs. And then to the left of that, I know it was anticipated to have some type of, you know, media cabinet for whether you had, you know, surround sound system or some type of speakers, you know, that maybe that can somehow incorporate into the utility room, even if that needs to expand down kind of into that.
Yeah, that was going to be my comment is that you want to consolidate utilities. You don't want to have the utilities on one end of the building and have to run all the way down to where the bathrooms are located. So that to the extent that the utility room can be somewhat in proximity will save significantly on design installation.
Now, Bob, and I know you had mentioned at, at one meeting when this was kind of brought up, the possibility of if, if you were to rehab the building, potentially trying to fill in the actual basement and do a slab on grade with the idea that the original house structure and framing sit on that rather than having that, that basement that really doesn't serve a whole lot of purpose and frankly is difficult to, to access to begin with. Is that something that, that the board would be, I guess, still want to consider? It certainly would add cost upfront, I think, from a long-term maintenance standpoint.
Maintenance and benefit might be there because you're now eliminating this space that's probably causing, caused a lot of our problems.
You can still have the, have the door there, but rather than a door that actually goes down a stairwell, that could become a small little closet.
Right.
Coat closet.
I'd like to, personally, I'd like to see that evaluated because I think it would, again, provide long-term benefits.
Right.
Yeah, evaluated.
Yeah. It would save on mold remediation in the future.
Yes, right.
Yes.
I'm saying that, not even kidding.
Absolutely.
Eric, what would you see on the north side of the Clark House itself? So where right now, the two additions are married right up to the north wall, right, of the house? I don't know if I have a correct picture. So that, I know I'm asking you a construction question here, so putting you on the spot for that, but I'm just trying to visualize. So you take off the additions and now you've got this wall that's just exposed. You're kind of rebuilding the whole north wall, right? To kind of match existing?
Part of it, yes. Mark, within that presentation, I think one of the renderings may have shown from that.
That one.
That one or maybe even the next one down. I mean, essentially they would, you know, like you said, they would kind of take that back wall. Currently where the fireplace is shown coming on the back of the building, that, that wall is completely, there's nothing behind it.
Right.
So even the 1930s addition where the barroom area is, that doesn't butt up to, that's actually on the backside of that given fireplace. So essentially you're going to draw a straight line across that. So in addition to, you know, the stairs and just the rise and run, it's the landing at the top of the stairs that's also the issue of why that second floor is, really can't be used.
So I guess my.
There is a, I guess there's an easy enough line where that currently, where that wall currently is to draw kind of straight across.
Yeah, and I guess as I'm thinking about rehabilitation versus, you know, just, it's probably good to keep in mind that that whole north end is going to be new construction, whether we try to preserve the rest of the structure or not, right?
Correct.
So that's going to be new, having to match old. Just, just a point to keep in mind as we weigh those two options.
Agreed, yeah.
I don't want to say it's half the house because it's really not. It's under half probably, but that north wall will be, will be kind of new.
I think that's a thought they were going to do anyway, right? Because most of it is kind of in the same color scheme and.
Yes.
And you, you wouldn't necessarily notice it from the outside because you'd still be changing all of the siding. You'd be changing all of the, the trim work around.
Yeah, all the siding on the house, everything on the original house is going to be changed too.
Changing all of that siding.
I just remembered that's all going to be, it's not going to be the original clapboard.
Part of it, you'd have to.
Why is it, why?
So a lot of it's not in good shape to begin with, but the, the biggest component and the, what's going to be the most difficult in saving any portion of the house itself is the, the actual exterior sill plate around the building and the extensive termite damage that's within that. You know, as you can see in, in some of these pictures, you know, especially where that, that hose pickets, you know, extending through that sill plate in that bottom right corner, that whole sill plate is rotten. There's extensive termite damage. It's rotten, that whole thing. You'd have to jack up the entire building a little at a time and take out pieces and try to piece a new sill plate back in all the way around. So just to be able to do it, you can see how much they've had to do already just to be able to get, add it to visually inspect, let alone to actually do the work.
You know, Linda brought up a good point and I was just remembering because I was just asking her about this, it's going to be Anthony House. The museum, the original house is there and the museum isn't new and butts right up next to it.
But people appreciate it because that's, you know, there's a lot more museum-ish things you can do in their history, but the house is intact, that you can take a tour of the house. You know, I don't know if we can ever get there, we take a tour of the Clark House, but you know, you don't know down the road. If we talk to historians that do this, they might find a way that, an idea for us to follow, you know.
I'm wondering.
You just got to save it.
Is there a way that we can sep, I mean, almost, you know, move this, so we can move this forward with a lot, you know, try to do, move this forward, keep moving it forward with a lodge without backing up against the, you know, redoing the house?
Well, I think the, the first step, I can continue kind of moving in that direction, but I'm going to need to go back to Bergman to, to have them, you know, give me a revised proposal to, you know, basically take the feedback that you've given tonight to try to incorporate that into a new schematic design to make sure that, you know, the board's comfortable and happy with that. Before they go into any type of in-depth, you know.
Right.
Construction demolition drawings of how to separate the, you know, and remove the portions of the building that will be, you know, taken down and how to save the existing as well as how to kind of rebuild and make a new exterior wall on something that, that isn't currently.
Can you refresh for me too, the dolomite lodge capacity?
I believe we've kept it at 99 because it is not sprinkled building.
Okay. And this is proposed?
It's dolomite, both dolomite and Harris Waylon Lodge are both posted at 99 because that is the maximum that we can post without having a sprinkler system.
Okay, gotcha.
This would be intended, they were shooting somewhere between 130 and 150. Again, that may end up changing, I guess, slightly depending on what, what overall footprint need, changes need to take place to kind of change the little, the orientation of this a little bit. But that's the goal, the goal we're shooting for is a larger capacity without being.
And Bob, we have gotten, oh, I'm sorry. We have gotten quite a bit of inquiries for some things over 99 that we haven't been able to.
Yeah, I'd heard that, that there was.
I did talk to, Brighton is in the process of doing theirs, a new lodge. They're going to look at a, at a higher capacity as well.
Right. No, I, I over the years heard that same kind of request and be nice to have something larger. So I'm not, not opposed to a larger than 99 capacity, but just curious.
There, there are sprinklers within this building currently. You know, certainly there, the, the system is not functional right now, but we'd certainly want to make sure that, and absolutely need to incorporate it into, you know, this, just based on that occupancy alone.
And if the house was treated kind of separate, if we can say that, that still would fall under the requirements.
Because they're connected, I think we would have to.
We'd have to sprinkle that too?
Yes.
Unless you look at fire separation, that's certainly a building co-design issue, but it can be challenging, especially adjacent to a historic structure. You might not be able to meet the requirements for fire separation.
Okay. That's a good point to, we could look into that and find out if, how cost prohibitive that is or not.
Sprinkler versus the.
Yeah.
I mean, there's, there's sprinklers in the, even the historic portion right now.
Yeah.
Can certainly look into what it might take, but as Carrie indicated, I, I think it'd be extremely costly to try to build it without.
Before you entertain any promotions to move forward with the lodge, I think it would be helpful to level set a couple reminders and then being mindful of the concerns or issues that were raised at the hearing, right? Or excuse me, the public information session.
There was some concern by residents as to the fiscal impact and coming out of the heels of the housing assessment, whether or not moving forward with the lodge would immediately impact property taxes and whatnot. I think it's helpful to, to note that this has been pending with the prior administration since 2019 or 2020 and then on hold as a result of COVID. So this is something that we've, that the town has continued to vet and consider potential uses. There are other concerns of, or questions as to whether or not we can partner with a restaurant or another business. And I think that's already been thoroughly vetted by the board and the prior administration. And there were no fruitful candidates that came forth with that. Is that correct?
That's correct. No formal proposals were received back in 2019.
And there were other suggestions or questions as to whether or not this would impact the use for other users of shadow pines, for example, the dog walkers, disc golf, other persons enjoying the open space. And if there was an event at the lodge or if this became a lodge space, would that inhibit other users enjoyment? And I don't think that's the intent by anyone on the board, right?
And it'll, it'll help them because there's going to be external bathrooms that they can use. So, you know, on that end of the shadow pines.
And one thing is, and I think Eric brought this up about repositioning, or remove, move positioning where the path will be so it will not be, and Eric, you want to show where the arrow is?
Yep, so to the left of the building itself, where Mark's kind of scrolling over, that path would actually be removed. It would be rerouted or, you know, where it does, where it does cross Clark Road, it would actually kind of come up to the north and then essentially turn and curve around the very front of the building around to the east side where those public bathrooms are located, trying to bring everyone back to the park. There would be a small spur that does kick off of kind of that Clark Road crossing that ties back in. It doesn't show it on this particular slide, but I do have a, I've got a different slide from them where it actually comes up, where that path ties to Clark Road, it actually comes up, but it, it curves more to the left, closer to where that property line is back.
To the left as we view it.
Yep.
To keep some continuity and access.
And to try to promote more separation away from that patio area as well. And even where that, where the path, where he's got the mouse from there, kind of back over toward the parking lot, that portion was even removed and was actually kind of turned to tie into the pathway more so on the north side of the cart barn.
I mean, what I'm trying to get at is, you know, at the information session, we weren't really, didn't engage and answer as many of the questions as they came up. But I think it's helpful to know that, again, the, the design and plan for this area is to take into consideration all types of uses with the student athletes, the competitions that we're hosting and then future uses and to optimize a space so as that it would be enjoyed by as many residents. And the lodge is the, the anticipated use having vetted through other potential uses. And that's what the board feels most confident about at this point. Would that be fair to say?
It would be very fair to say.
And there were other suggestions about using the Clark House as a place to sell refreshments for golfers or whatnot. But I think having heard so much from the public and our discussions here, it's really to preserve the historical elements of that house, even if we were to change with modern day foundation or just to make it more stable, but to really give deference to that historical preservation. So, okay. So what are we looking for tonight?
So as far as more details, I mean, for example, there was questions about the roof over the patio, whether we wanted a full or the partial? Is that something we want to wait on?
See, I like the comments of Historic Preservation Board. They, they said they wanted the partial, you know, they had, they had different ideas in there. I'd like, I'd like Bergman to, to look at, you know, see what they think of, because they are all people that work in historic, almost everybody on the board works in historic.
I don't know if I have the Historic Preservation Board's comments or notes. Yeah, I mean, if someone can send them to me, I'd be happy to review through those with Bergman.
Certainly I can do it. Because I do have them all. Yep. Will do. All that from, to Eric. Great. Is it, go on. Is this something that the board feels comfortable moving ahead based on with Bergman's plant, input to do something with, give us some options on the house piece of it, the Clark House, but move forward, try to move forward with the design of the lodge, again with some, you know, obviously some tweaking because we have to look at that, where the utilities would go? Or wait till you just want to see, see what they come up with that and get back to us and again, look at this again at a work session?
Yeah, I don't know how far we can move forward without interrupting the process or, you know.
So I, so part of it, for them to do the, the revised contract, just to be able to authorize them to, to do this and authorize the town to spend the money, I believe, I don't anticipate that dollar amount exceeding what the supervisor has authorization to approve without needing the rest of the board.
Okay.
I'll certainly find that out. I'll, I'll verify and get a proposal from them. If, if that dollar amount is less than that threshold, I guess would the board be supportive and agreeable to allow the supervisor just to sign that to keep this moving forward rather than needing to bring that up at another work session and then follow it up with a resolution at a future meeting?
Can you just remind me what the dollar threshold is?
I believe it's 5,000.
Okay.
So I'm, it's 5,000, but I don't, I'm pretty sure that that's what it is. Pete maybe can confirm. can confirm?
I don't know, off the top of my head, but you, maybe you could authorize the supervisor to execute a contract not to exceed $5,000.
There you go.
That's fine, yeah, that's fine.
And we can do that for the March 15th legislative meeting? And hoping that they'll have something, you know, in.
I don't know that they'll be able to necessarily get started doing a whole lot prior to that.
Right. That's fine.
Yeah, I mean, they may not want to, just in case something happened and, and then, you know, it was voted down, they're, they're not going to want to do everything for free, but let me, let me see what I can come up with and, and what I can do. You know, maybe it's a simple enough change, I know we do still have some money, very, very little left in the, the original amount that was allocated for this, but let me, or if it ends up just being a change order, I know, you know, at least the supervisor can sign up to.
Well, I can understand that.
5,000 for a given change order, so let me, let me see how, how that.
Right, we are going to go forward with this, we just would like to see that, you know, the changes made, because I think we're all in agreement that this, we like the, the bones of this, right?
Yeah, that's a good way to describe it.
Okay, and I agree with your points about having the historical board, the comments put in there as well.
There's certainly a lot of little details that we'll have to, you know.
And it's certainly not something that we're gonna have every little detail figured out beforehand anyway. I guarantee if we move forward with the project, and during the construction phase, there's going to be change orders, there's going to be things that, that come up that, that were just never anticipated, you know, because of the project itself and what it entails. But let me see, I'll, I'll work with Bergman to, you know, make sure that, that we take into account the Historic Preservation Board's, you know, comments and notes, as well as, you know, the, the feedback that, that you've provided this evening.
Okay.
I'm going to raise this now before I, I forget, there was another resident who, as part of his profession, had offered services to the town without charge of a laser scan of the interior of the Clark House and separately the barn, wondering if the board is amenable to allowing that, so that we can preserve the historical aspect of the Clark House in the case that when this does move towards construction, you know, there are incidents or accidents.
So I, I can also say that as part of Bergman's review with the Clark House, that has been completed, they actually did that scan already, so we do have that exact same information, that was something that, that Bergman came in and did as well.
Can we see that scan?
And maybe make sure it's what he's offering.
Yes, I will.
Okay.
Yep.
I think so that we can know that, otherwise if.
No, that's good information, because we didn't know that.
Oh, yeah, I was gonna say. Because if they've, and, and if he's got that, then we'll know if it's a duplicate.
See if, yeah. If that's exactly what he was proposing, and get his, get his feedback on it.
Fine, fair, fair enough.
And then when we go to decorate again, we don't have to, you know, rack our brains if it's already something that's documented.
Fair enough, okay. So we'll, we'll.
And then is our communicate, no, communications director, I don't know, who, who of the town would be ownership of just documenting this process of?
The process of?
Well, I, I'm just trying to think ahead of, you know, it's, it's a pivotal point and also.
Oh, the actual house, you mean?
Yeah, of all of this.
Video and pictures and everything else?
Or just pictures, right?
Typically, PCTV has already documented quite a bit, but they, they'll go through the video at all, I know, the pictures I've been pulling up was all from PCTV, went this past week, took pictures, they would go out and with a lot of our projects, do video as things are changed or modified, or once construction starts, so they keep that historical
Okay, I mean, I've, I've seen some of the reels, but I'm just thinking again.
Yep, they'll be out there and they'll video it and take pictures of all of it.
And, and after the meeting last Wednesday, I actually went out with PCTV, as well as Kristin Air Communications Director on Thursday, to go through and, and make sure that we took, you know, additional videos, pictures, and whatnot, so.
Perfect, that's good, so we'll keep up, and Dave's very good about it, Dave Renner and his team down there, he's actually offered, and he actually has, has said any help we needed on that, he would be more than happy to be there. And, and actually, anybody that wants, wants to go through and see the house again, Eric has mentioned, you know, that we, if you all like to see it again, we should make a tour, go over sometime and, and see exactly what, what we're looking at, okay? So moving that forward, so we'll get a.
So the motion would be?
Be to move ahead.
To what Pete said, move ahead.
With authorize the supervisor.
To sign an amended contract.
Authorize, sure.
Bergman not to exceed $5,000 for the revised plan as discussed tonight.
Perfect.
Is there a second?
Second.
Sounds good, all right. How about a roll call vote?
Draw.
Aye.
Cole.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Ockton.
Aye.
Thank you, good. We're moving in the right direction, thank you all. All right, now, to the Clark Road Barn, so we heard, not besides the Clark House, but we heard a lot of the speakers and the emails were concerning, you know, the barn and that we form a committee, there was a outcry, I think we heard, of people interested in, in doing something with, finding out what we're gonna, what our options are for the barn, so the understanding that this committee maybe would, would be comprised of not only the people that were, that expressed the interest or desire at the meeting, but also a well-rounded, a good representation of other people in the town, so, that might, to review these options, so I'd like to see, I think that we should do our due diligence and bring this back to the board in a timely matter, have them identify options, since the town is not identified a, a use for the barn, if they wanted to be charged with looking at possible, a possible option, or what we should use the barn for, the funding, grant resources, all that, I would like to hear what the, how the board feels about that, and maybe Candace, I know you're thinking about it.
Can I, can I just say, at least to, to start, I thought it was incredibly helpful to hear in that kind of public forum, as the board knows, you know, this was a proposed action that was brought to us, and it, we could have, I think, made the grievous mistake of moving with a resolution to demolish a barn in that quick order, right? And I think it, it's just another example for me that, before we make such permanent decisions or things of an irreparable nature, that we need to just pause and do our due diligence and then engage the public, because we can't make decisions in a vacuum, right? And then hearing, we've been hearing an email, or by in-person residents, or by phone, but just to hear from so much of the community, from different interest groups, and persons that normally wouldn't engage with the board, I, I just found incredibly helpful, and I, it really did change my mind on the barn. I think prior to the last couple weeks, I was of the mind of, look, it's, it's a really decrepit building, and I thought it, it was unfortunate that the, that the town hadn't taken remedial steps earlier, but I, again, was of the mind that it was in such a poor condition, that really, there was no other option but to demolish it for concerns. And again, we didn't have the bandwidth or subject matter expertise in-house to kind of see what could become of the, the building, and not having an anticipated use, or we've been, or I was hearing these various things where it was really just one potential option in mind, but the hearing, again, from the public, just really helped me to see that there were other persons that were willing to help, that had the subject matter expertise that I don't, or that the board doesn't, and that they are willing to engage and collaborate with the board was incredibly encouraging to me, and I think it, it's just a really good example, again, of civic engagement and just collaboration, so it really did change my mind, I think, to, to hear of the potential uses of a potential farmer's market, or just open space, having it be an open pavilion, having it honor at least the, the history of Penfield as a farm town, again, that I'm just not as familiar with, having not been born in Rochester, but just to hear, how can we still honor the past, but accommodate for future enjoyment of this parcel? And then looking just at a global view, which I did look at the aerial map of the quarry, the future of Shadow Pines, and the intended use of just that entire segment of our community, what are we going to look at, or what are we going to plan, what do we envision for this space? And the quarry isn't going to be there forever, so can we find ways that just really make this another hub of Penfield? And I really am buying into that idea, so again, I'm not volunteering to lead this entire thing up, but if there, you know, we heard from enough of the residents.
I'm thinking you are.
Then let me be loud and clear, I am not volunteering to lead this whole thing up. I think, again, to, to receive help from an advisory board comprised of persons with subject matter expertise, the interest, the bandwidth, again, the resources or access, we've heard from persons engaged in construction, in historical preservation, again, the person in mind with the laser scan who did the 3D rendition, we have really talented people in Penfield who are willing to invest their time and energy and whatever resources they have to lend to the decision-making of this, this barn. I, I really think we would benefit from engaging that, that talent pool, again, the advisory board, if they are help, willing to help kind of think of potential funding sources, I think one person had volunteered with experience in grant writing, if we can supplement their assistance with our own, I think it can really be something beneficial to the town, right? And we can preserve, you know, even if we have to rehabilitate the structure, have I sold you enough on it?
Have we sold you on it too?
Yeah, we still need, you know, like we went to the Shadow Pines Advisory Committee, Andy Moore chaired it, you know, I mean, we need, you need a town person to be the lead on that, because that's what kind of holds it together, because the people, the citizens need, they need somebody from the town who's the owner, what they can do and the parameters, you know?
Okay, so if you're asking.
Nothing will get done, there'll all be all these great ideas, but you need to bring it.
Oh, I don't know, I think that group of people would, would move to action like tomorrow if we let them, so if you're asking for a liaison to the advisory.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay, I'm happy to take that on.
We would actually have some, a town staff, somebody on the town staff, I would hope would maybe come forward, I'm looking at a shining face over there, I thought maybe
I think, given my past experience, prior to being an employee, but a resident of the town, and having served on the original moratorium committee as a resident representative, I probably have the background to participate as a staff member, to provide staff support.
Oh, I'm looking at all three of you, I think, you know, to some degree, all three of you would be involved to an extent, again, not, not.
To an extent.
Yeah, to an extent, right, but falling under parks, falling under engineering, join the fun, guys.
Miss Carrie, at least, we can start with.
Sure, I think I would, from a staff point of, point of view, I could be the, the main point of contact if anybody had questions.
Yeah, and I'm, again, in all seriousness, not looking for you to actually be active members on the advisory board, but at least accessible to that board in case they had questions, or in case I, I myself have questions, I think we need some direction, so.
So the one thing I would share, just as, from my planning background and just community development in general, I think it, the public engagement is very important. I think it's also really important to make sure that the group is well-balanced, both geographically and from a level, expertise, and it's important to have folks on, on a committee that understand limitations, parameters, what can and can't happen.
Sure, that's all going to be formed by, not a charter, but at least the, the, what's the word I'm thinking of, like?
Their mission?
The charge, the charge for the advisory board, that's not charter, charge.
I just think that's always important, because again, this is one area of Penfield, and so we want to make sure that it's meeting the, the more global towns' needs and desires as well. It's always a matter of balancing local concern or local benefit versus town-wide benefit, that's always the challenge.
That's what we did with the moratorium committee, that's what we did with the Shadow Pines Advisory Committee.
Yeah.
So I, I think we, we, the board had also investigated after the information session, and I think with respect to the Landmark Society of Western New York and potential resources, I think Debbie, you did make outreach to them, and whether they would be able to support this project.
And I, well, I, I reached out to the Genesee Country Museum on that, I have not reached, I have not heard back from the Landmark Society.
We reached out, but, but we haven't yet heard responses back. So I, I think it's, again, helpful for the public to know that we really did appreciate a lot of those comments, hearing different perspectives, and then just reminders of the roles that each of us play in partnership, and so, and that Debbie had taken affirmative steps to kind of, in anticipation of today, so.
So move, so we could move this forward and form, and form an advisory committee?
Yeah, I think the advisory board is what I'm thinking, kind of like what Carrie said, of course, the executive functions of allocating spend or authorizing dollars out of the budgets or funds would of course be reserved to the board, and then ultimate decisions regarding, right?
So generally, boards of this nature will present a sort of course or recommended action to the town board for consideration, that's what the moratorium committee did, we evaluated several scenarios, options, if you will, and then, and that sort of happened somewhat organically, but also it was a product of some development potential that was out in the world, so we were looking at the various alternatives, if you will, and then the committee moved through an evaluation and sort of establishment of criteria for what would drive the committee's decision-making at the end. So I think you could structure this in a very similar way, where there'd be some presentation to the town board with, here are the, here are the scenarios that we envisioned, or reviewed and discussed, here were the pros and cons of each of them, and then here's our ultimate recommendation to the town board, for the town board to take that forward and take action.
I think you got a handle on writing that resolution that puts together the committee, because really, I mean, it's something that's simple, right, the charge, and then some end date, you know, but, and then, and then it's up to us to appoint people.
I think it's, it's always valuable, and it makes everybody's time more worthwhile if you provide a really clear framework about what you're asking people to talk about and do, so I think that's really always a great starting place.
So I, I agree with you, at least the starting point, but I think we can move, I, I think there, I heard a lot of call to action last week, and so rather than just getting together and just talking about what are we going to do with the barn again, I think we can have charges there of, are we going to rehabilitate or replicate? Are we going to find external funding to preserve the barn as a barn, or are we going to solicit funding to transform this into some other type of use?
Sure.
You know, so I think I would want to empower this board to do a little bit of the legwork that, again, that the board just doesn't have the bandwidth for.
Oh, absolutely, I'm saying, I think, but in doing so, it wouldn't be, you know, carte blanche to, no, you can do whatever you want with that barn.
Sure, again, so, so, okay, so then if that's what you mean by parameters, then I agree, and again, the charges are what we are really seeking from this advisory board is the expertise, and, and again, I, much like historical preservation, that they are comprised of architects or other skilled persons in that realm, right? I think we would need to solicit, again, widely, because there are persons that may not have a subject matter expertise, but have the passion for something and might contribute a different skill set, right? So I, I think here, we would move for a resolution.
To.
To establish the advisory board, and then next steps would then solicit applications.
For people of interest that would like to serve on this.
Okay.
So here, we can establish, we're gonna go have a resolution for the next meeting, by then, we should have something written down too about what you're just saying, the different things that we want to address.
The mission, actually, the mission, the charge, really, it's the mission.
Carrie, I can work together with you on that, because I, I think I just have some ideas, at least from hearing from the residents, and I've, I've just been kind of, yeah, compiling those thoughts and then thinking of, of next steps, so I can, I'll circulate those to the board for, for input as well, but if we're all in agreement that we're going to be moving down this path, I think we can get started. Okay, then I'll go ahead and make a motion for a resolution to be prepared, to form an advisory board on the Clark Barn with Ockton as liaison. Thought I could sneak that one in.
Did you see that bus go by? So, so, should we have a little roll call vote, Sue, on that?
Draw.
Aye.
Cole.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Ockton.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, so, all right. I think that's, I'm getting to the end of our agenda, and no, we have no informational items tonight, we have no held items, old business board, we have none, any new business board? Seeing none, we have no executive session tonight, our next work session will be March 22nd, 2023, and I'm going to then adjourn this meeting tonight at, at 8:59, and so I'm just getting some notices here about how poorly the roads are tonight, so everyone, please be safe and drive home very carefully, so thank you again for attending, and have a nice, have a nice evening.